It looks like President Bellamy is online.
Eleven forty-five on December seventh, call the meeting of the governance committee to order at eleven forty-five. And the parliament's committee chair and everyone.
Good morning, I'm Carl Jacobs, AST school board.
Chief Office Officer.
Chair, right, superintendent.
Howie Leston, board member.
Jim Anderson, COO.
Brian Gustafson, chief academic officer.
Amanda Foster, executive assistant to the board.
Dave Donnelly, board member.
Brad Higgins, board member.
Yes, this was us.
Corey Ace, teacher. A G A president.
Yara Silver's, right for the Austin current.
Melanie Sutton, senior school district's housing physical education curriculum coordinator.
And my understanding is we have Mark, President Bellamy on the line. Is that true, President Bellamy?
That's correct, thank you.
Is there anyone else online?
Mike Fleckenstein, chief information officer.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mike.
Okay, proposed resolutions, there are copies on the table to my left. And we'll start with resolution number one, brought by number Donnelly. Do you like to speak your resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we have an existing board policy, six one one five regarding ceremonies and observances. And it specifically meant calls for the recognition of the commemoration of special days and events. And encourages to recognize days and events of local significance. So. Number one would call that simply add language to the existing board policy that in all schools. The United States of America's national anthem shall be played at the beginning of any regular school day held on Veterans Day, September eleventh and December seventh. Obviously, we all recognize the significance of those three holidays. And it can be very, very important to call special attention to those days for our students by playing the national anthem at the beginning of the day for all students.
Discussion. I'm putting myself in the speaking order. Let me say, my, my only issue is specifying the beginning of the regular school day. This is a time when a lot of schools do have specific plans to, to honor those days. And I would. I don't have words in my head for it, but I would say that we ask that it be played sometime during the day for all students or at the beginning. So that if they're, say, doing a third hour assembly or some commemoration during the day. They, they wouldn't be playing at once, I guess. It's my own concern. Set a natural hesitancy to stipulate really specific activities into schools because they do all vary. I don't really have a problem with it being played on, I don't have a problem with it being played on these three days. But if the schools do make plans, I want them to have a latitude to set the time and place. I, I think. You're able to do that in a way that has more impact on students. I don't have an actual.
Member Jacob. So, remember Donnelly, as we go through these, if you could address just a couple of things from procedural and background standpoint. One, I don't see, these items appear to be just from you and don't have a second. So if you could clarify, if a second board member has signed on and if. Has one hasn't previously signed on, if a board member would like to act as a second, we could clarify that now, that would be helpful for me. The second item, which I hope you can address, member Donnelly, as we go through these, is what's kind of the origin for how these resolutions came to be presented? So the research you engaged in, the stakeholder involvement you participated in, and who's been involved up to this point besides yourself? Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Um, member Bellamy. She's unmuted.
Oh, I believe you're muted, member.
Okay, I'm having some technical difficulties. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I, I. I, I think these, we have seen these, most of these before, and I'm, I'm. I'm just, they seem more like ARs than they do policy. I think the policy, I think as policy. I, I can only, as a principal, having to remember to do all this stuff. Every single occasion as, as policy. I think if it was an AR, I could probably. Live with that, live with some of these, but I, I do think. I would like to hear from, from the administration. On their, what they feel, on their review of the impact that having such specific. Date, uh, uh, time sensitive tasks assigned to schools and administrators. I, I would like to have a discussion on that. Thank you.
I will say for the record, I will second this, so that it is on the floor for discussion. Seeing no other hands.
I, I was hoping member Donnelly could address my second question. I think you addressed my first, I can.
Yeah, um, let's see, stakeholders, I have developed a large group of stakeholders in support of this. I think it's kind of just common sense. And research, I, oh, I. I don't know what research would really be required of this. It's the national anthem, which is the federal law, is adopted by federal law. And these dates are very self-evident as far as their significance to our nation. And the existing policy specifically says schools are encouraged to recognize dates and events of local significance, and these are national local significance. Schools shall commemorate special days and events, you know, in accordance with law. We're not even complying with the law right now at some of our high schools. And superintendent, I've asked him to, you know, try to deal with that, but it hasn't happened. And that's as far as the reciting of the national anthem, I mean, the pledge of allegiance, we have a state law covers that, so. No, I haven't done a giant outreach on these, this specific number one.
So. Yeah, thank you, member Donnelly, and I appreciate that you feel at least one of these resolutions is common sense, and I'm not trying to discount your perspective, to be clear. What I have learned, especially engaging in the land acknowledgement process that President Bellamy and I facilitated, which took, you know, really a full year to. Engage stakeholders, make sure that she and I encompassed feedback and perspective larger than ourselves, given that. The policy impacted ninety-plus campuses. Is that what is common sense or? Kind of, you know, a, a basic approach to myself was not, in many cases, even to President Bellamy. That's where I was hoping for some additional, additional legwork to be done on, on these items. I, I see these resolutions kind of as a group. Which appeared, at least prior to today, have been from yourself, to be asking for more civic engagement, which is something, to be clear, I support wholeheartedly and I asked for when we first established our goal, our goals and. When I joined the board, and we discussed an interim goal which addressed civic engagement. I don't know that these are the right methods to go about adding civic engagement for our students, and it sounds like you haven't engaged in a stakeholder process to know that either. And that is what I think is, for me, is missing from the conversation. I would like to engage, for instance, our partners on J-Bear. To identify if this is what they would recommend as appropriate ways to, to engage in such civic engagement, so. In terms of how I would recommend moving forward. I would support the board asking administration to develop a plan to increase civic engagements. Encourage pride in our, our great country and address and honor some of these items. But I don't pretend to know that these are the best way to do that, and, and I don't know, and I don't have a scope. An understanding of how this would impact day-to-day operations at ninety campuses, and that information is missing for me, and so I'm, I'm leery about. Making those changes without kind of a, a broad stakeholder process having been completed at this point. So those are my concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, I do want to insert the member Wilson has joined us online as well. I'd like to offer an amendment by inserting words or jury in between the words of.
And second, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll pause to see if there's a second.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
President Bellamy also has her hand up.
Okay, President Bellamy. You may be on mute again.
Just back to my statement earlier, I'd like to hear from the administration. As part of this discussion, I mean, I, I think you are, you are amending. I think that, I agree, they're all four connected, and we're dealing with them one at a time, if that is the chair's will, desire. But I think I would like to have a response to my question before we start amending any of this. And, and, and if that's possible.
Sure, I'll start off, and then I may ask the team members to chime in. My perspective is when we had this conversation around the pledge of allegiance, what we did was we surveyed all of our principals. They completed a survey about what are the specific building limitations or schedule limitations to executing one unified policy across all buildings, and there were some challenges. Some schools do things differently. Some schools don't have an overhead speaker, for example, to do things like the, the pledge via that medium. So my one wondering would be, are there specific buildings to which this policy is written that would be a challenge? So, Mr. Gustafson, do you have something you'd like to add?
You know, I think I just echo that. We, when we did the survey, looking at who all was doing the pledge. At the beginning of the day, there were some schools that literally just don't have the capability to do that. They do it usually, those usually have a kind of a, a different type of assembly type of thing, or especially in our smaller, more. Like charter schools and that kind of stuff. So having a uniform deal is pretty hard to do. Especially when we're, if you're looking at all of these different specific gates and. Anytime we give specific things for schools to do, it just becomes harder and harder to be able to manage them.
Sure. Number Jacob. Yeah, so I'm gonna kind of make a. I'm gonna put my recommendation into action, motion, as to what I think the best path forward is. Because I personally see this four items being connected, and I echo and support member Donnelly's. Request of something I've asked for, for some time, for us to examine how we can continue to bolster civic engagement, either in or outside of reform. Formal rules and guardrails. So I would move that the committee recommend to the full board that we. Ask administration to review these resolutions and recommend how, if, if possible, we implement. Some of the requests in these resolutions as a district and what the feasibility is that they, they undertake the work necessary to. Perform that stakeholder engagement, and then come back to the board and brief us as to how and. How we could make this a reality. So that's my, my ask, is that this committee recommend the full board ask administration to engage stakeholders to understand how we can implement these. Thank you.
As a procedural. If we do what you're saying, it seems like we are forwarding this to the board. And then asking them to take a particular action on it. It seems more appropriate that the governance committee could ask the administration for that kind of feedback and hold this in governance of such time.
I would be in agreeance with that path forward as well. Yeah, I wouldn't object to that, sir.
Okay, procedurally, that just makes more sense here. So that is a motion by member Jacobs that we hold this pending direct feedback from the administration. Discussion on that motion.
Can I ask a third question? Would this apply to all of the proposals, so not just. But the Juneteenth and all the others referenced?
For instance, I would hope under Juneteenth, I'm assuming, it sounds like member Donnelly hasn't engaged our MEKET committee or other community stakeholders. I, I would love to get their feedback as to. If they have ways to improve this proposal, make it better, make it meaningful for our students. I would also like to see parent engagement in this process, which it sounds like hasn't happened yet, so. Really engaging stakeholders is what would be underlying purpose for my ask, and so if, if administration is willing to use existing feedback loops to improve and recommend implementation. Processes to the board, or at least this committee, speaking to the chair's point, that I think is the best way forward, given the, the lack of stakeholder engagement thus far.
Other discussion?
I would.
Number Don.
Yeah, if the committee chooses to go this path, I'd really like to see some sort of date certain for response from the. Administration. Second, as far as stakeholder engagement, I was very public about this one during my reelection campaign. Put it on my website that I was gonna do these, suggest these. There was, you know, very public notice that this was my intent if I was reelected, I was reelected. This is within our authority as board members to decide, so I appreciate the interest in, you know, stakeholder involved.
Any other discussion?
A point of information, Mr. Chair, could administration speak to, you know, we've discussed at this point what at least. My, my recommendation is, and I don't know if the chair or Mr. Donnelly support it, but if, if that recommendation carries. Do you have an estimated timeline for what that might look like, and would it be true of adequate time to provide meaningful engagement back to us as a committee?
So what I would recommend is that we engage with our building leadership and understand the current state affairs, similar to the pledge of allegiance, and if there are gaps in. Civic engagement, then we need to figure out what is a policy that, that can ensure it happens, because I think all of us are supportive of this happening. We're just trying to figure out policy level. How do we implement? So to your question, member Jacobs.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you may not know, because you weren't here, but there was a survey conducted school-wide about Constitution Day. But schools did, so we do have that data. It's a mishmash. It's completely different from school to school, and it is a federal law. Our schools recognize Constitution Day. But there's no consistency across our district for that function right now. But we do have that survey in place.
Okay, so I know we've engaged on Constitution Day and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gustafson, how, what would be an appropriate time?
Yeah, you know, just thinking about what we have on our plates right now, I would say probably. I, by the summer. It would take a while to, we have a lot of. Engaging, public engaging activities that we're doing right now, and it's the same people doing all of it. It's not a quick turnaround probably for this.
Could I, could I ask, is it feasible to at least get an update, say, by our March meeting, to see how things are going in that process, even if it isn't completed?
I would say.
Okay. Actually, just to schedule check, so that's, that's my proposal then, Mr. Chair, I defer to, to you and Mr. Don as the other committee members, and I, you know, I always appreciate other members, since we typically have majority of the board here expressing feedback too, so.
Any other discussion? Siri, seeing hearing the hands, take a vote on tabling this no later than March, awaiting feedback from the administration. About feasibility or possible changes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
The motion to table. For the record, Siri is not voting. The motion does carry, and we will take this up again no later than March. Or earlier, if it comes back. Next on the agenda is board policy fifty forty ARs. These are the ones we should have reviewed and be ready to make amendments to as needed, if I correct in that. They're up for like this regular review. At least. Okay, ARs, I'm sorry.
I think we're just reviewing.
Maybe it's just ARs to review, we do have Melanie and Ken here.
Yeah, do you folks want to speak to any of these, or are, are these proposed change, are there any proposed changes in the package this is? So no suggestions to change? So these are just to update some of the ARs. Anyone have questions or folks in the room that know the answers?
I have a point of clarification, so, thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. So roughly a year ago, the board passed a massively revised board policy fifty forty. This is our promise, it's your policy. And as part of that, there were a number of items that needed developing more robust ARs. So this is. My understanding is that this took some time to work out the many, many details that will then help. Our building leaders implement this policy successfully. So that's, I think that what this packet is, is the response to massively revised policy.
And, and I did read through, I saw some things I truly liked, and one of them in particular was that. Especially as that lunch is a time for social activity. And then we had some elementary tools that were prohibiting conversation during lunch, which is efficient, but sad. Yeah, I, I saw several things that were addressed that, that I fully support. I didn't see anything to object to. Um, Mr. Ray.
I get a lot of questions on the elementary lunch recess. I'm curious, is this twenty minutes for, for lunch and thirty minutes for recess, but then it's a forty-five minute block? Confused on, I, this wasn't a fifteen minute block.
We have the opportunity to split the recess, so like our upper grade students could do half of the recess and then get to their lunch. And the other half could be taken in a later time to complete the full recess requirement.
That, that, that statement, the second statement on that AR, elementary lunch and recess, it's the second paragraph, if you will. The principal in charge of each unit, in collaboration with his or her scheduling or leadership team, shall create, provide a lunch and recess schedule of no less than forty-five minute block. Exclusive of passing time, was the original AR that gave guidance to elementary lunch and recess. Dated twenty twenty-one, I believe. The forty-five minutes instead of fifty, Corey, is to provide that flexibility for building principals, as Nonny was saying. Because if, if a school chooses to do a thirty and thirty, thirty-minute lunchtime, total lunchtime with at least twenty minutes seated. And thirty minutes recess out time, because that's how it works for their schedule and their coverage, that's great. If for some reason they decide as a part of their master scheduling process that they need to break up that recess time, which. Some would argue is actually better for kids anyway. Then they have that flexibility to do that, but they can't go less than a forty-five minute total time at lunch and recess. So, and if they do split that up, then that means that the classroom teacher or other staff member takes the students out for a, a scheduled recess. That meets the thirty-minute daily, daily requirement when combined with the recess that's combined with lunch. So I would add that five minutes on to like another fifteen or twenty minute block then for like a, a different schedule. It could be, yes, it could be. We, we would say really that a fifteen minute recess is about as little as you'd want to go for a midday recess. So if we know that our, our lunchtime is a minimum of thirty minutes with a minimum of twenty minutes seated, right? Then fifteen minutes for, for recess is reasonable. That is not uncommon. That would mean then that they would need to schedule another fifteen minute recess, at least one fifteen minute recess some other time during the school day, regular and scheduled. And that's happening in a lot of our schools, in their schedules? It, it depends on the school. I, I'm surprised at the number of schools that are doing thirty and thirty, but they're, they're making it work. And a lot of that, I would say, though, is, is based on the coverage, the new duty supports that they have.
Other discussion questions? Member Don.
I continue to support a full one hour for lunch and recess, even as much as I value the instructional time. But I do think it actually makes the instructional time more valuable if we provide a full sixty minutes for lunch and recess. Additionally, if we're gonna say that certain schools could no longer have the quiet time, we're gonna lose kids being able to eat. They don't eat, they don't focus on eating if they sit there and immediately have conversations with their friends. I've seen it that, I've been a new dude, I've been there in, you know, in the lunchroom and seen the difference between the two things. And I think there's a real legitimate place for a period of time where the kids focus on eating, and so that we actually know they actually eat something. Rather than just, just converse and socialize the whole time. So I think there is a real value to that, because we want them to have proper nutrition. And a lot of times, they will prioritize the socializing over actually consuming food. I've seen it. And so, these are my comments.
I think that, I appreciate the support, the comment, the reflection, and I, I think that the tension is real. As I recall, I don't have offhand, that particular recommendation comes from the USDA a few years ago, based on their studies and their findings. So that's, that's the best practice that we would be putting into practice here in AST.
You mean a period of focus when eating?
No, to prevent, to prevent silent lunches, because the social aspect is so valuable. If you think about the entire course of a school day, things tend to be pretty structured, and so it's one of those. Few spaces that students have to connect and to collaborate and to communicate, and indeed in the portrait of a graduate. Communication is what our stakeholders are valuing. So I hadn't thought about that until just now, but it is. If we have kids, talk them with their mouth full, I'm okay with that.
Just to be clear, I'm not advocating the entire lunch period, yes, I agree, but just to have their, I think it's, if it works for. But just to have their, I think it's, if it works for a particular school, then I'd be allowed to focus on the first five or ten minutes. For eating and consumption of food. That's, that's my theory about this, but, and not that the entire be a silent period, yeah.
A reflection without evidence is that it can create tense situations where adults trying to impose. Um, nutritional silence, five minutes. Um, five minutes of silence, I tend to yell at students because they're stressed out of a situation. And I think that's also unfortunate. It becomes like a disciplinary, um, situation, so.
And I think that's a very legitimate issue from school to school.
And, and it is, it is a side base.
Very different from one school to another school.
That's very true.
Where my kids went to elementary school, it was very successful. And it, it, you know, I was there, I was there in person a lot and saw it work, um, and, you know. As soon as we, the, the ten minutes was up, there was lots of talking going on and socializing and everybody was happy, cool.
Mr. Andrew?
If I, if I could, uh, I, I recall us having significant conversation about this when we were talking about the fifty forty. Um, policy overall. And, uh, the directors involved in that process shared our experiences with. Nutrition five is one common name or practice where we, um, provide five minutes of silent eating. Usually at the front end of lunchtime. But it is limited to five minutes. And then they have free time to socialize. I don't recall in our policy that we were saying that they could not make use of nutrition five. We are saying that they do need to prioritize time so, for socializing, which means you cannot have just a silent lunchtime. But it does not necessarily preclude the use of nutrition five. For people like myself who. Tend to talk more maybe than, right, when we have an opportunity. Um, maybe I would be a little more robust. If I were, uh, uh, forced to eat more of my lunch in elementary school like it was elementary, rather than having the time to talk entirely. So, so all that, so nutrition five is still an option.
If that's still option in this language, I just, I might have misinterpreted this language. The, the conjunctive and, you know. It's not a and or it's and, so that's what. Helped me to read that in a way that seems like there couldn't be a nutrition five, but I agree with.
Yeah, um, I don't, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to express appreciation for, um, Mr. Andrew's and the sub continuing to. Um, go through the necessary work to, to roll out, um, subsequent ARs related to, uh, the fifty forty overhaul. The process, I think, was pretty textbook in how such a huge policy change should happen. Um, both deliver stakeholder engagement as well as, uh, just intentional and pretty, pretty awesome staff effort to, to make so, so thank you.
I'll say that I've observed in school lunchrooms. A growing desire by adults to impose the kind of lunch activity they would like. And gradually go to war with their own students. It's, it's kind of sad. I, I think this. Emphasizes some student voice in, in the lunchtime and as disturbing as their voice can be. I, uh, I think that's a good thing.
I just wanted to remind the board as well, I mean, again, extending my appreciation that, um. We have some scholars at a national level looking at what Anchorage is doing. And that's really exciting. And we actually are in a position of, um. Maybe helping kids out around the country. Um, and that's, that's really remarkable. We had, um, an individual, uh, come in, Dr.
Julia.
Yes, Dr. Cohen, uh, come in a, uh, just a few weeks ago. And give us some, a pretty comprehensive, but bringing an overview of everything. So I just, it's really exciting. Um, to see this tied up, you know, with a bow, but know that there's more coming. So, thank you.
Now, if we can just get Sam. Member Don?
They do that inside of this.
Don't even get me started on our prisons. Okay. It can grab it. And so, um, Mr. Chairman, where are we at procedurally on these? I mean, if, if. I would like to see sixty minutes and I wish the AR reflected sixty minutes. Um, but it's an AR, it's not a board. Element here, and yet the board has the authority to set a policy that would set sixty minutes. We can.
Um, you know, basically this is sort of like the reports we get where. They're presented to us, we review them. And we're aware, uh, that if we wanted to make policy, we could. But the administration makes.
Right, right. Well, would it be appropriate if the committee considered a recommendation to the administration that this be changed to sixty minutes? Because I would support that. At least it would be, we could clearly do that, make a recommendation. Of this AR, review of this AR, and it be changed to include a full sixty minutes of lunch recess.
President Bellamy has her hand up as well.
Uh, so I was just. Yeah, I was just going to recommend that we come forward with a separate resolution speaking to. Um, why we think the AR should be interpreted that specific way. Or, um, a minor tweak to fifty forty to specify that additional requirement. Cause there are, there's a minimum lunchtime requirement that's listed in minutes, so a separate sentence could be added. I don't think that this is. ARs are informational only and we, as a board have agreed not to direct what's in them. So I think we would have a separate vehicle to make that so. But this is the appropriate committee to do that with.
President Bell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm just, I just want us to be, um. Appreciative of the work that has gone on before. We have in list, we, the, nothing is matter of fact in these, in this work. Uh, these discussions have come up, we've had them. Um, and so I would want to hear from the committee, the people who, who, you know, member lessons. Uh, Melanie, all of the executive, the, uh, directors. Uh. Because they, they've given this more than due thought and they have. Come up with ARs to support the discussions that they have been involved in. And so I, I, I would not want to make, I don't know if I would support the change as I sit here now without having that reflection. Thank you.
I'm inserting myself, um. I'll say this has certain minimums. Um, but it, as I read it, the language doesn't restrict the school from doing more than that. Um, and if we, again, if we make a policy or the administration. Makes a regulation that raises those minimums, there's always a question of how that impacts. Certain schools or a handful of schools that, that may have scheduling issues. Uh. You know, what jumps to mind is where we have, uh, programs within a school that actually separate out their lunches. Different things, logistical issues. So I, being as where we're not setting maximums, um. I personally am comfortable with the language like it is, knowing administrators can do something. More if they choose to.
Yeah, just to, to the language in the policy, uh, that the AR reflects, says that elementary school shall provide a minimum of twenty minutes of eating time. After being served for lunch, ten minutes for breakfast. Secondary school shall provide a lunch, you know, less than thirty minutes, which also has time for whatever else the kids want to do. Um, and one of the things, one of the key pieces of feedback we receive is that. Kindergartners, first graders take the longest, you know, to do anything. First graders have no teeth. Um, first of all, you know, they're all losing their teeth, but you know, they can't open things, they're not very efficient. And it's some of the older elementary students who they can eat their lunch really fast and then they. Are sometimes creating disciplinary problems. They're just getting into trouble. Um, in a fuller thirty minute block. So I think that was part of the feedback that we received from, um, the wellness pilot before COVID shut it down. Um, so. I really support the idea of a sixty minute block and that's certainly something that I've been invested in for some time. But I also understand the logistical challenges of managing students. Who may act differently within a lunch period and, um, for our schools. That use the NPR for their gym space, if they don't have a dedicated gymnasium. Um, that creates a scheduling problem. So that was another piece of the feedback. So I think that those elements that sort of the, the older kids getting into trouble. And competing uses for building space were reasons why the language and the policy and now the AR. Has the minimum of twenty minutes of seat, of seated lunchtime.
So I, I do think the intent of the board has been made clear to administrators, um. I don't know that there's a path for the board to direct the administration to change ARs. I mean, I suppose we could reject them or, as you mentioned, we could make a policy. Uh. Have some specific action like that. Let's go move ahead, unless someone does have a motion they want to make or. Um, someone wants to call for a vote if they want something.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair.
Hearing, hearing the proposals like that will move to the revision of board bylaws ninety-one thirty.
Take the floor and respond, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Members Dickens.
Thank you, sir. Um, and I'll have Ms. Foster, as she has time, bring out the related, um, draft memo. Which I wrote to, to go along with this revision. Hopefully we have it in front of us. Um, it provides some clarity and rationale for this change. I'll walk through the logistics of what it actually does first. Uh, there is a BB ninety-one thirty regulation that takes the first. Um, three bold paragraphs you see there, takes it from the regulation, moves it to the policy. I find this adds clarity, providing everything, all the, all irrelevant information in one place. And this isn't new language, this is previously approved language. It also. Um, I think avoids additional regulation where policy is sufficient. The. Um, there's additional clarifying language regarding the board president, um, creating ad hoc committees. Uh, then lastly, the. The primary change there in the, I guess. Sixth paragraph, um, which is also in hold, indicates that the president of the Alaska. PTA or municipality of Anchorage based member in good standing of the Alaska PTA. Uh, as their designee may serve as an ex officio member of the communications committee. Uh, this is a board driven decision for a board committee. This, uh, change would allow a, a parent that is involved with the Alaska PTA. To engage in our meetings, uh, and, uh, I, in my opinion, of increase. Parental engagement, provide a direct uplink and downlink for information and perspective. Uh, what I think the board hears quite often, um, as often as we try to engage the community through community council meetings, through. Regular email correspondence, through phone calls, direct personal relationships, is that there are. Families that are, are caught feeling unaware of significant changes the district makes. Um, the reality is we may never, uh, get to a hundred percent level of communication with everyone. Um, however, this is a step in that direction of providing additional ways for the board to express our priorities. Uh, the rationale, uh, for decisions that are, are being made at the board level, as well as to receive additional feedback directly from. Um, stakeholders whose, um, children's lives and educational careers are being impacted by the decisions we make. Uh, Ms. Foster, do you have the ability, the ability to bring up the memo that's included, uh, the emails? With this resul, uh, the, the draft for policy change?
I would have to, that will take me a minute to get to.
Perhaps while other board members speak, you can bring up that, um. That memo draft and then just to speak to stakeholder engagement, um, the current president of the Alaska PTA. Um, had a chance to review this, reviewed it with, uh, members of their executive board. Also was in contact with, um, local PTA members here in, um, in Anchorage. Um, made minor changes at their request, um, but this, as I understand it, is a, a policy change that. Um, is supported by Alaska PTA members and those are parents of students in our district, so. We'd be glad to answer any questions or provide clarification. Thank you.
I will second this, um.
I remember President Bellamy has also signed on at your welcome to do so.
Um, Member Dickens?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out what, what this, first of all, when you talk about the, the participation of, uh. The PTA, you've given them voting, voting as an ex officio to avoid, uh, committee. Is that your intent to make it so, right now you've got three board members, you've got an ex, two ex officios with this. Will make up forty percent of the voting to the committee, but you want to give them a voting, uh, place at the table.
So, yeah, to be clear, board committees don't actually, um, engage in votes that, um, take action on behalf of the board. Our board policy is clear that committees are advisory in nature only. Um, so as much as this committee can, can make policy, all we really do for, as a governance committee. Is recommend policy changes to the full board and that's our policy committee. Um, this policy change specifically applies to the board communications committee. They actually don't even set policy. Uh, the really what they do is, um, recommend legislative priorities to the board, recommend a potential communications calendar. Um, and engage in stakeholder, um, communication back and forth. So policy wouldn't be impacted by this change. Um, the, uh, ex officio can denote that there's an option to vote. Um, I don't know that the communications committee has held a formal vote since I joined this board. Um, we've recommended changes to our lobbying guidelines, but really, um. I don't think communications votes on much. And so this really, really would have come into play there. Um. It really would provide an uplink and a downlink for additional stakeholder engagement parental involvement.
And if I understand this, once you, you, you're reinforcing that there's three committees that won't be an internal audit. Uh, operational audit committee or is this addressing that issue or?
It, no, completely neutral, Member Higgins. This literally copies. Information from the regulation that exists currently and paste it into the policy instead of a separate document. If you were to pull up board docs, um, right now and pull up our policy manual, this language exists in a separate BB ninety-one thirty regulation. It simply moves it, for in my opinion, it has clarity. Um, we had definitions for what the committees were supposed to do. As a matter of fact, in our last governance committee meeting, you know, our chair truthfully disclosed that he was unaware that. Um, governance was supposed to engage in, in audit work. Um, and that's because in my opinion. The doc, the, the, the information was hidden in a separate regulation that we don't refer to. Um, so this adds that clarity, changes nothing in that regard.
So we, we're looking ahead at that policy issue. I know we discussed that last thing about establishing an interlock.
It would not, it, it remains neutral on that. Agreed, yes.
Other discussion? Member Don?
Thank you, I. I mean, I see the merits, uh, I've been to state PTA meetings, weren't that many people there actually. But, um, as a delegate. This, the way this is drafted, though, I just point out. President of the PT, of the Alaska Parent Teacher Association could choose to come themselves. And they might not even be a resident of Anchorage. Because it's an Alaska statewide based association, so it doesn't necessarily even have to be a member of a, of, of our constituency. That we come to the meeting in an ex officio status. And whenever you expand your membership of a board committee to include members. I mean, why not have the ADA have a member on there? Why not have minority community representation on there? I mean, there is this existing language says the community may actively seek additional input participation. We, we encourage people to, you know, to come to meetings and PTA folks could come now. Um, so it starts to make the question, why not the next area of expertise? Why not the next organization that is, could be very, very relevant to communications? That's my only concern about this, not that I wouldn't love the PTA to have people here all the time for communications.
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, I can address that. Yeah, so, um, the, uh, in speaking with the current president of the Alaska PTA. Um, they expressed that, um, there are four regional chairs in Anchorage for the state PTA for their executive. Um, the current state PTA president is from Anchorage. Um, they've expressed that they have full confidence that if. A, a president who isn't from Anchorage and, and their, in their recollection. There hasn't been a president for the state PTA that isn't from Anchorage in recent memory. Um, historically, it is always from Anchorage, but. Um, that's why that additional language is listed there, um, as the president says in me. Uh, I'm trying to envision a scenario where a parent from, who isn't from Anchorage would like to. would like to participate in an advisory committee for a school board that they don't have children attending in. And I, it to me, that it borders on non-coherence, non-coherent, not strategy, or whatever that would look like. I guess I I don't know what that scenario would look like. And so we could certainly add stronger language um, to require that this person be from Anchorage. I wouldn't object to that. Um, I just don't think that that type of parent exists that would want to impact policy in a different section of the state in the very limited capacity our communications committee actually does impact board policy. Again, I I don't think we've had a single vote in my two years. Uh, we've just conducted advisory up or down um, on things like communications plan for the board and our lobbying priorities. Uh, with that said, we can certainly tweak that. I think that addressed, oh, and then you asked about specifically about um, other stakeholders. Um, Mr. Race shows up to meetings and we allow him to participate. Um, I don't see that changing. However, our primary um, customer is a school district are our parents and our students. And I think this gives them a seat at the table that they don't currently have. I think we do a great job in their other venues, frankly, to engage our educators and support staff, which I'm also working on. Um, but this is one method to engage in this work specifically.
Other discussion.
I just want to make this one comment, maybe it's more of a question. I'm wondering, Member Jacobson, if you were intentionally specific around PTA being named here, because I know at our schools, we have multiple different parent organizations that parent groups have chosen to affiliate with. And sometimes they very carefully consider which organization they want to be a part of, so we have many schools that have PTAs or PTSAs. We also have many schools that have PTOs now, and it intentionally gone a different direction in terms of their affiliation. So I don't know if if that's something that you might want to consider in terms of broadening the language here and the scope, if this were.
Sure, and um, like, Mr. Chair, if I might, yes, another point I considered actually in talking with PTA leaders. Um, they recognize that there are PTOs and PTSAs that are um, that operate within ASD schools. Um, this language wouldn't preclude us from engaging in outreach with those um, groups individually, however, um, yeah, and I, in a school by school basis, there simply isn't a way to encompass uh, the significant number of schools that are associated with the Alaska PTA. What I envision um, is creating some sort of um, newsletter document that maybe looks very similar to our community council newsletter that Member Bellamy, I'm sorry, that Member Bellamy creates each month, and ensuring that every um, PTSA or PTO uh, president receives that document to ensure that everyone uh, feels included and is also able to attend our communication meetings if they so choose. And so I think additional outreach can be done. Um, there isn't a way, unfortunately, to include every individual or easily to include every individual PTO uh, that operates kind of as a sole unit within a a particular campus, to the best of my knowledge. If there are other members who have ideas here, please. Uh, but it was something I considered quite a bit. It's a very question, sir.
Other discussion. I I have some of the same concerns, Member Donnelly raised, that uh, making an actual member from uh, potentially out of Anchorage, uh, or just someone who's not actually part of the district, so to speak. I I'd like to think about it a little bit more, uh, it. And and I think it does raise the question, why wouldn't we include other groups? Or why we wouldn't include members of PTOs uh, or other organizations? I I do like the idea of directly encouraging parent organizations like that. I I like the idea of us doing some work to help encourage more PTAs or parent organizations at all of our schools. They they don't all handle. Um, a little bit of a loss in the short term about exactly how to do that. I don't know, I hesitate on that basis. But any other comment or discussion?
Well, from from my part, Mr. Chair, if I might, um, my my ask is simply if the committee chooses not to approve um, this this measure today, I would ask for specific um, items that the committee would like to see addressed to ensure that it does get approved. Uh, that's my ask. I obviously am not not going to twist any arms, but it would be helpful feedback for me to go back, engage with stakeholders again, and come back with something the committee would consider. Whether it's, you know, we're just adding a line, requiring that we be from Anchorage. I think that's kind of implied, and realistically, what would happen anyway, if we want to specify that and resolve, if that resolves concerns, that's well enough. There's other challenges that need to be addressed, that's fine, too.
I believe we have the current chair of the communications committee on line.
She's unable to unmute right now. She's having issues with her phone, but uh, President Bellamy does have her hand up.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. So I I, on behalf of the um, not speaking on behalf of the committee chair, but the conversations in communications have this year focused entirely on improving parental engagement. And one of the ways, just like we work with state legislatures to do that, we work with the municipality to do that. We wanted to work with the state organization um, that um, that should be, that 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 that, not should be, but the state PTA organization uh, that provides um, that service and that input and those resources to our parents. Um, I know the organization is growing, so our conversations in the in the communications committee has not been on any policymaking. It's strictly been on in information, getting information to to parents, to uh, parent serving organizations uh, in terms of what we're doing. And so at the state level, uh, that's why the PTA as the organization within our state for PTAs, and I do understand that uh, you know, we have PTOs, we have parent teacher student associations, we have all kinds of groups. And I don't know that I know the the um, I don't know how they cooperate with each other. Uh, but for us, just like we have a, uh, you know, we have state associations, uh, that's why we, that that's why I think it is very appropriate for the Alaska Parent Teacher Association or the PTA uh, to be the uh, uh, to get the, help us get information out. It is not to help us, uh, and to give input on information that we are. The communication committee evaluates and recommends external communication to the public. That is by far the largest core group of our public is our parents. And so as they rebuild and as we try to realize an improvement in our parent engagement strategies, I I see this as an important step for the board.
The other, another piece I'll add to, kind of a search emergency, and why, I think, a fair question, which hasn't been asked directly, but maybe the, is underlying is why now? This district is undergoing a significant amount of change here within the next twelve months. We're talking about sixth grade to middle school. We've engaged in PLCs. We're talking about school start times. We're talking about the career academy model. If there were ever a time to identify ways to boost parental communication engagement and involvement, this seems to be a really great time for us to have uh, ability to receive additional information perspective and create those relationships as we undergo the myriad of changes that we've taken, I think, with good reason. But to help communicate those, so I won't say that there won't be other um, reasonable conversations about adding additional members to the committee um, in the future. What I what I also will say is, um, I don't know that we want to make uh, perfect the enemy of good, and if we truly believe this isn't a reasonable step, then I understand. But I struggle with getting to the the place where we don't think that additional parental engagement is 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 unreasonable. So that's kind of why this this policy change is here.
I'd like to offer an amendment by starting non-voting uh, in between the words and an ex officio.
I would second.
We can second the discussion about the insertion of non-voting.
Yeah, thank you.
Housekeeping.
Right, and I'm sorry, yeah. Grammatical change, um, change the word and again to a to serve as a non-voting ex officio member of the communications. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the change, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That change that's made, I'd like to also offer an amendment to strike the words, starting with B at the beginning all the way to O uh, so that it reads, a municipality of Anchorage based member in good standing of the Alaska PTA, chosen as their designate, may serve as a non-voting ex officio member of the communications committee.
Say.
Just a second, any discussion on that change?
Could you provide, repeat one more time, the deletion, sir?
Yep, um, in essence, everything up to the letter A. Uh, so the the, it would be capitalized, a municipality of Anchorage based member in good standing of the Alaska PTA, chosen as their designate. No change in the language, uh, simply striking the first part. Uh, so that it is always an Anchorage based person um, that would be a non-voting member. Second.
I did, I think.
The state PTA.
Cut that out.
Um, no, it says the
It's in there twice.
Member in good standing of the Alaska PTA, chosen as their designate, may serve as a non-voting ex officio member of the communications committee. But it would not automatically assume the president.
In the lots of point order, I don't think this qualifies as grammatical, but since he introduced Alaska Parent Teacher Association before the parentheses in the first part of the sentence, would you need to delete the letters P, the acronym PTA and define Parent Teacher Association?
Um, that, yeah, I would think that was a grammatical requirement.
And Mr. Chair, we also need to to buy their designate to A designate then, under the same housekeeping. Because I think you referenced the president who's no longer in that language, if I read that right, if you remember. One would be the designate in the PTA.
I see the organization.
The organization's designate.
Okay, maybe it should be his designate. All right, maybe that's fine.
Is it possible to put, Amanda, is it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Uh, yes, please.
A- Amanda, is it possible to put the changes up on the board? Because I I I really can't follow. Uh, I I can, I think I'm getting it right, but it's just that six paragraph they're working on, so if we could put that in a document and put it on the screen so we can all see the changes, that might help, if you can. If you can't, then we can wait.
It'll be a minute, because the one attached to the agenda is a PDF, and we are just so everyone knows, we are at time with our next meeting, starting in fourteen minutes.
Okay.
But I can try to.
Okay, that then that's okay if we're, uh, I I can just wait until I get it from the maker of the of the uh, from the committee chair.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
If those housekeeping changes, Mr. Chair, I would support the I think we just want to change there to it's just for clarity, and then I think that that makes sense, and still captures the original intent of the.
Um, so I'll offer up the grammatical change of there, the H E I R to I T S. Yes. Any other comments? Any other discussions? Terry Heen.
I'm I'm willing to support, I mean, it's forward. I just wish we would have had the same sense about holding something for the perfect, because I think early resolutions were fairly good.
Yeah, I'm sorry, might follow that.
I was just pointing out that I wish we would exercise the same philosophy of not holding something that's good for the perfect. To seek the perfect, but I'm willing to go along with this, even though I don't think it's perfect, because I think it's good. I wish we would exercise that same philosophy in the first four resolutions that we considered.
Okay, I think my amendments make it perfect. Hearing no other discussion, um, all those in favor of the amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The amendment carries, what's before us now is the amended changes to board bylaws ninety one thirty. School board committees.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we recommend that this be um, taken up by the full board and referred to President Bellamy for placement on the future agenda. I think that additional amendments may be offered at that time.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It will be sent to President Bellamy for inclusion in the uh, full board agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. Um, discussion on item number four, proposal for new board policy about parent notification. Member Donnelly, would you like to speak to it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we know, we don't have a existing policy.
I'm really sorry, you have a point of order, but you have another meeting. And this one is over time. Yeah, we're four minutes over at this point.
So do you, Mr. Chairman? I'm ready to move forward with this.
Okay, I thought we were running until, I'm sorry, we are over time. I I'd like it now. Um, is there a motion to extend our time?
So move.
I'll second.
Can we make it till time, sir, number eleven fifty five? For my folks with a five minute break in between.
You have to have that five minute time to switch over. It's necessary.
Uh, the motion is to extend our time to eleven fifty five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Um, please continue, Member Donnelly.
We don't have an existing board policy uh, on this issue of parental notice. Uh, there are existing administrative guidelines. They're not administrative regulations. They're administrative guidelines, which means they're not necessarily based, they don't have to be based on a board policy, because uh, you know, regulation has to be based on the policy. Um, so this would clarify that the presumption, uh, well, the existing guidelines for secondary students, the presumption is that parents would not be notified of uh, gender or identity expression or transitions um, requested by students. Um, and this would change the presumption so that parents would be notified of such events. But it has have a clear uh, caveat that if evidence exists that notification of a parent is likely to endanger the student, superintendent may confidentially seek school board approval to not require parental notification, providing a safety valve. I strongly believe the presumption should always be in favor of parental notice and not against it. And this would clearly reverse the presumption of the existing guidelines against parental notice for secondary students and make it in favor of presumption, uh, in favor of notifying parents unless there's some specific reason not to notify the parents. I would also suggest that the current um, guidelines are rather confusing because while it states in section Roman numeral fourteen, capital A, that generally notification of a student's regarding secretary, secondary students, generally notification of a student's parents is is unnecessary. Then it goes on in a separate paragraph to say, when a student's transition during a school year, the principal will hold a meeting with the student parents to discuss their desires and concerns. The principal should discuss the student's timeline for the transition process in order to create conditions supporting a safe and accepting environment at school, which seems to conflict with the statement in the above paragraph that it generally should not be notified, parents should not be notified. So we have a a conflict in the existing guidelines, and this thing's very confusing and distressing, actually. Um, and this would clarify that 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 actually, that last paragraph is what we should be doing.
I'm I'm gonna speak in opposition, and I'll say this as someone that has some classroom experience and to some degree with the situation. Um, number one, any time there's issues with a student at the point where a classroom teacher is discussing it with an administrator, usually the second or third or maybe fourth question is going to be, have you talked to the parents about this? And if the answer is no, the simple follow up is, well, why not? I mean, that's just sort of the way things operate without an administrative regulation, without any board policy. As I read the administrative regulation, it
It's not a regulation, what it were.
Or guideline, for, thank you. Um, what it does is actually say to a teacher, you have some latitude to make this decision in the moment the student is talking to. in the moment the student is talking to you. And that contacting a parent is not going to necessarily be an expectation, if for some reason you feel that would be a positive step. And for the most part, I I think a classroom teacher needs that clarification in order not to contact the parent. Stepping back, secondly, I've seen situations where students were Patricia has to be referred to as Pat or Patrick has to be has to be referred to as Pat. Do we need to call home on that? I I guess I'll say it as if I still had a class in front of me. I just want to get through the role and begin my lessons and begin doing what I need to do. And then lastly, if there is that question that that it may be endangering to the student, the teacher would have to stop, talk to their administrator, who would then have to talk to the superintendent, who would then have to come to the board. And then if the board doesn't grant approval, not to require parental notification. That suggests we have to. And and that's a really awkward thing where a a student would, I think, operate under the presumption that they could at least talk to someone at school about something that's concerning to them without it immediately resulting in a phone call home. If they do some action that's out of line, yeah, parents are going to be called. But the fact that that a student conversation may initiate a call home regardless, I I think adds to the barrier that often already exists between educational staff, support staff and our student body.
Mr. Chair.
Particularly for students that are.
Point of personal privilege. Yes. Number one, it's eleven fifty five, and I think I promised it in the meeting. Two, before we adjourn this committee meeting, could I clarify the same question I asked earlier? Does this proposal have a second?
Um, things where we have reached a time, sort of to adjourn, I'm going to say this will be the first item on the agenda for our January meeting.
It'll actually have to be in February. January is already full.
Oh. Is February acceptable to the maker? Although my inclination is because it was on the agenda for this one, that we just make it the first item in January.
So we had a, you might recall that we had agreed that the administration has a lot of things to bring forward, and so that's why we decided to do a ten thirty to twelve meeting to focus on that. So and that was requested over a month ago, so I would hate to change it now.
Mr. Chair, you can call a, you can think about whether you want to call a special work session between now and February to deal with, once you look at the 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 list of items, see if you want to catch up that way.
I'm I'm thinking about my personal calendar and saying, I'll
Okay.
I'll do that.
Okay.
I am still going to say that I think we should make it the first item on the agenda, and I think we can discuss it and come to a conclusion in a reasonable time. I I know that edges into the time that we set aside for the administration, but I think we can have ten or fifteen minutes and they will still have time to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Like I said, there's a limit to how far off we should keep pushing items. So with that, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned, and we will take this up at the January meeting. Thank you.